Oh rise, oh Christian people, prepare yourselves today. Prepare to greet the Savior who takes your sins away. To us by grace alone, the truth and light were given. The promised Lord from heaven to all the world is shown. Prepare the way before Him, prepare for Him the best. Cast out what would offend Him, this greatest heavenly guest. Make straight, make plain the way, the lowly valleys raising, the heights of pride abasing, His path all evenly laid. The humble heart and lowly God raises up on high. Beneath His feet in terror, the haughty soul shall lie. The heart sincere and right, that He's God's invitation and makes true preparation, it is the Lord's delight. Prepare my heart, Lord Jesus, turn not from me aside. And help me to receive you this blessed Adventite, from stall and manger, Lord. Come now to dwell within me, I'll sing your praises gladly and forth your glory show. Come thou long expected, Jesus, born to set thy people free from our fears and sins, release us, let us find our rest in thee. Israel strength and consolation, hope of all the earth, dear desire of every nation, joy of every longing heart. Born thy people to deliver, born a child and yet a king, born to reign in us forever, now thy gracious kingdom bring. By thine own eternal Spirit, rule in all our hearts alone. By thine all sufficient merit, raise us to thy glory astral. Come now precious ransom, come holy hope for sinful mortals. Come, oh Savior of the world, open our to thee, oh mortals. Come thy beauty, let us see, anxiously we wait for thee. Enter now my waiting heart, glorious King and Lord most holy. Dwell in thee and her deep heart, though I am but for an only. And in faith I will embrace, Lord thy merit through thy grace. My hosannas and my palms graciously receive, I pray thee. Evermore as best I can, Savior, I will homage pay thee. And in faith I will embrace, Lord thy merit through thy grace. Hail Hosanna, David's son, Jesus here for supplication. Let thy kingdom set the crown, bring us blessing and salvation that forever we may sing, hail Hosanna to our King. Comfort, comfort ye my people, speak ye peace, the sinth our God. Comfort those who sit in darkness, mourning need their sorrows, Lord. Speak ye to Jerusalem of the peace that waits for them. Tell her that her sins I cover, and her warfare now is over. Yea, her sins our God will pardon, bloody knout each darkness deed. All that well deserved is anger, he no more will see or heed. She hath suffered many a day, now her griefs have passed away. God will change her pining sadness into ever-spinning gladness. Hark, the heverald voices crying, in the desert far and near, calling sinners to repentance, since the kingdom now is here. O that morning cry obey, now prepare for God our way. And the valleys rise to meet him, and the hills bow down to greet him. Make he straight what long was crooked, make the rougher places plain. Let your hearts be true and humble, as befit his holy reign. For the glory of the Lord, now all earth is shed abroad, and all flesh shall see the token, that his word is never broken. Hark, the glad sound, the Savior comes, the Savior promised long. Then every heart prepare a throne, and every voice a song. Here comes the presence to release, in Satan's bondage held. The gates of grasp before him burst, the iron fetters yield. Here comes the broken heart to bind, the bleeding soul to heal. And with the treasures of his grace, to enrich the humble soul. A glad Hosanna's prince of peace, thy welcome shall proclaim. And hence eternal watches ring, with thy beloved name. Jesus came, the hems adoring, came with peace from realms on high. Jesus came to win redemption, lowly came on earth to die. Alleluia, alleluia, came in deep humility. Jesus comes again in mercy, when our hearts are born with care. Jesus comes again in answer, to an earnest heartfelt prayer. Alleluia, alleluia, comes to save us from despair. Jesus comes to hearts rejoicing, bringing news of sins.
Good morning, everyone.
Oh my God, I feel like we're at the Arbor House.
I'm gonna have to go to the bathroom first.
Well.
We've been only having three people at the Arbor House, they're all dying off.
Well, I don't think anybody's died off here, I think it's just cold and windy, um, for everybody.
Cold and windy, people.
I don't know if they missed it, understood my announcement of saying that there will be Tuesday morning Bible study or not, um...
Well, I saw it in the bulletin, but we don't have emails, so I'm gonna have to see if they can send it to you.
Well, you announced it.
What?
You announced it Sunday.
I know, I don't know if they misunderstood my announcement, so...
Oh, here comes, here comes our caller.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna begin with some prayer, 'cause it's ten o'clock. We got some people online watching. Heavenly Father, give me thanks this day. Mayst that you be with us as we explore your work, your letter to the Colossians, and your letter to us today. In Christ's name we pray, amen. So we have finished chapter one. Most scholars would say Paul gets to his, one of his main thrusts, starting in verse 1:21. Um, I still kinda consider it an introduction, considering that the previous section, 15 through 20, is known as the Christ hymn. Um, because, I mean, it kinda reads as, as a poem or as a song, uh, when you look at it, so... But either way, definitely chapter two, we are in the middle of Paul's opening argument. The introduction is over and he has transitioned to talking to the Colossians. So, if you don't mind, I'm gonna read through all of chapter two and then we'll go back and start talking about it. Since we're missing most of our people, I think, uh, oh, we have several people out of town, we have several people sick as well. So, "Chapter two, for I want you to know how great a struggle I have for you and for those at Laodicea, and for all who have seen me face to face, that their hearts may be encouraged, being knit together in love, to reach all the riches of full assurance of understanding and the knowledge of God's mystery, which is Christ, and whom are hidden all the treasures of wisdom and knowledge. I say this in order that no one may delude you with plausible arguments; for though I am absent in body, yet I am with you in spirit, rejoicing to see your good order and the firmness of your faith in Christ. Therefore, as you receive Christ Jesus the Lord, so walk in him, rooted and built up in him, and established in the faith, just as you were taught about him in thanksgiving. So that see to it that no one takes you captive by philosophy and empty deceit, according to human tradition, according to the elemental spirits of the world, and not according to Christ. For in him the whole fullness of deity dwells bodily, and you have been filled in him, who is the head of all rule and authority. In him also you were circumcised with a circumcision made without hands, by putting off the body of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ, having been buried with him in baptism, in which you were raised with him through faith in the powerful working of God, who raised him from the dead. And you, who were dead in your trespasses, and the uncircumcision of your flesh, God made alive together with him, having forgiven us all our trespasses by canceling the record of death that stood against us with its legal demands. This he set aside, nailing it to the cross. He disarmed the rulers and authorities and put them to open shame by triumphing, triumphing over them in him. Therefore, let no one pass judgment on you in questions of food and drink, or with regard to a festival or a new moon or sap, or a Sabbath. These are a shadow of the things to come, but the substance belongs to Christ. Let no one disqualify you insisting on asceticism and worship of angels, going on in detail about visions, huffed up with reason by his sensuous mind, and not holding fast to the head, from whom the whole body, nourished and knit together through its joints and ligaments, grows with a growth that is from God. If with Christ you died to the eternal sin, if with Christ you died to the elemental spirits of the world, why, as if you were still alive in the world, do you submit to regulations? Do not handle, do not taste, do not touch, referring to things that all perish as they are used, according to human precepts and teachings. These have indeed an appearance of wisdom in promoting self-made religion and asceticism and severity to the body, but they are of no value in stopping the indulgence of the flesh." So, in the preceding verses, Paul had talked about the things that he had experienced, the sufferings for their sake. And this leads into his next section. Paul uses a lot of for and therefore's, uh, since. You know, we kinda translate all that into English, but he's a rhetorician and he builds his argument upon argument upon argument. It's very, very common. We saw this a lot in the book of Romans. That Paul was building one argument upon another, and he, he, right? We saw that he, he points out that both Jews and Gentiles are sinners in our need of salvation. So then he points to Christ and he points to justification. And then he builds upon what does that mean, and he builds upon what that means for the individual, what it means for a community, and what it means for kind of a, of a, of a people in, in Romans. And then how to interact with individuals and with, um, society and with government as well. So now, he is here, he's been dealing with this, this, um, this false teaching that has crept into, uh, the church in Colossae. Now, Colossae is close to Laodicea, right? It's close to Ephesus. Laodicea and Ephesus are both letters that the book of Revelation, or excuse me, are both churches that the book of Revelation are sent to and, and mentioned in the section, in chapter two and three, the section of the seven letters to the churches, right? Anybody remember what Christ says about Laodicea? In those, in, in Revelation?
Which chapter would that be?
It's chapter two. So the church of Ephesus, "To the angel of the church of Ephesus writes the words of him, rolls the seven stars in his right hand, and walks among the seven. Lame stands, I know your works, your toil and your patient endurance, and how you cannot bear with those who are evil." So notice, there's been a shift between Paul writing the letter to, um, the Colossians, excuse me, sorry. Ephesus was dealing with his own issues. Um, so, Colossians was dealing with false teaching. I noticed here in Revelation Ephesus is resisting false teaching. Uh, "But I have tested those who call themselves apostles, that are not, and found them to be false. I know you are enduring patiently and bearing up for my name's sake, and you have not grown weary; but I have this against you, that you have abandoned the love you had at first. Remember therefore, from where you have fallen, repent to do the works you did at first." So they're resisting false teaching, but they're not living their faith, right? And there's this, there's this idea in Christianity that as long as we're just pure in doctrine, that's enough. And no, that's not enough. James makes that very, very clear. It's not just about having pure doctrine. Pure doctrine are, are, you know, believing in justification. Nah, I shouldn't say believing in justification, but believing in the justifying death of Jesus Christ gets you saved. Right? That, that makes you saved. The free gift of salvation is given to you, but that has effect on how you live. And so the fruits should be there, the works of the Holy Spirit working through you, and that is you taking care of your neighbor, which is anybody in need that you can help, whether that's far away or close by, right? So you show me your faith, I'll show you my works. So, the Ephesians resisted the false teaching, but they're no longer being a force for good, so to speak, to, to steal a tagline from our US military. Um, they're, they are no longer doing the works of serving their neighbor. So that, that's what he has against them. And then you have the church of Laodicea, right? Which is the last letter. "And to the angel of the church of Laodicea write the words of the amen, the faithful, the true witness, the beginning of God's creation. I know your works, you are neither cold nor hot, would that you were either cold or hot? So because you are lukewarm, neither hot nor cold, I will spit you out of my mouth; for you say, I am rich, I have prospered, and I need nothing, not realizing that you are wretched, pitiable, poor, blind, and naked. I count to you to buy from me gold refined by fire, so that you may be rich, and white garments that you may clothe yourself, and the shame of your nakedness may not be seen, and sell to anoint your eyes, so that you may see. Those whom I love, I have reproven discipline, so be zealous and repent. Behold, I stand at the door and knock, if anyone hears my voice and opens the door, I will come to him and eat with him, and he with me. The one who conquers, I will grant him to sit with me on my throne, as I also conquered and sat down with my father on his throne. He who hasn't ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." So, the problem in Ephesus, you have pure doctrine, but you're not doing the works of God. The problem, the, the issue in Laodicea is, it's a nominal faith, right? Do these things universally afflict the church today? Yes, that's why they're the seven letters to the church today, you could say that as well. So, um, here, Paul mentions Laodicea. "For you know how great a struggle I have for you and for those at Laodicea, and for all who have not seen me face to face, that their hearts may be encouraged, being knit together in love to reach all the riches of full assurance of understanding and knowledge of God's mystery, which is Christ, and whom are hidden all the treasures and wisdom and knowledge." That is one sentence. It's three verses.
Paul knows that a lot.
He does, he loves his run-on sentences. So the question is, is well, how does Paul struggle for them if he hasn't seen them face to face, right? He planted the church in Ephesus. He did not plant the church in Colossae. He did not plant the church in Laodicea. He planted the one in Ephesus. Well, when he planted the church in Ephesus, what did they do? They raised up other missionaries to go to Colossae, to go to Laodicea, right? Um, I'm blanking on the guy's name, uh, but it was here in, in chapter one. Starts with a P, I think. Jeez Louise, I would forget his name, right? When it, it's right on the tip of my tongue, okay. Christ used this Colossae. Okay, so he introduces himself. True words, a whole word bearing groups. Epaphras. Epaphras is the one that went and planted the church in Colossae. So, how does Paul struggle for people he has never met? I think it's a great question. Okay, it's a question we deal with. How do we struggle for people that we have never met? Well, Paul is one writing this, this letter to deal with the error going on. He's written several letters to deal with the error going on. I say several letters. Right? There's the church to the Ephesians, the church to Colossae, the church to the Philippians, and also, um, the letter to, um, Onesimus is his slave, um, Philemon, right? So he is continuing against the false doctrine, he is continuing to preach and teach, and he is in prison in Rome preaching and teaching. His hope is to make the Roman emperor Christian, right? That's the whole reason why he wants to be able to present Christ to the Roman emperor. And what would be a secondary goal of that, well, either the Roman Empire tolerating Christians, at the very least, are becoming a Christian, um, nation, if you will. So he is, he is contending for them even though he is not there. And so he's written this letter to them to deal with the specific troubles going on, but he's also far away helping. And he is sending missionaries to them, right? Or teachers to them. Right? Or teachers to them. Well, what does the church do today? We advocate our moral issues. Right? We live in a country that has religious freedom, so, um, whenever the states, uh, so whenever the government imposes on that, we file amicus briefs or lawsuits against that. There was one where in, in Missouri about a decade ago, went all the way to the Supreme Court, um, a LCMS church and school had applied for a state grant to take the pea gravel out of their playground and replace it with rubber mulch, because the state was helping to do that. And the state denied them because they were a religious preschool. Well, there's nowhere in the language that excluded religious preschool, so it went all the way to the Supreme Court and that church won. Um, they found that it was exclu-, uh, uh, excludatory. Um, we filed amicus brief on behalf of the Little Sisters of the Poor. So I know the ACA slash Obamacare, whatever you know it as, is very big in the news right now, but one of the things that, um, when the ACA passed, it made all employers provide birth control, and included under the definition of birth control, abort efficients. Abort efficients is not normal birth control that people think of. Abort efficients is like Plan B, things like that. And so Little Sisters of the Poor, which is a group of nuns in Ohio sued because they said, uh, "No, we're not gonna cover that," and so did Hobby Lobby, and so we, we filed amicus briefs in those lawsuits as well.
And they won, didn't they?
They have. They have repeatedly won. Their, Little Sisters of the Poor is on their second or third lawsuit though, believe it or not. Um, yeah. Um, the, the baker in Colorado, we filed an amicus brief on his stuff where, you know, he, he never denied the person buying a cake. He just said, "We won't specially decorate a cake" for this. So anyway, and then what else do we do? Um, we send missionaries both locally, nationally, around, and around the world as a church body. We help take care of Christians that are close by, and of course, we also have a pastor. Right? And what's my job is to teach the word here. So, and the same model that Paul is doing, we see it in the church today. We struggle for Christians around the world, even though we haven't seen them face to face. And we do that that they may be encouraged, their hearts encouraged. Right? That they may be knit together in love. I'm thinking about it, knit together in love. Paul's a tent maker, right? And when you make tents, you're sewing canvas or animal skins or whatever together. You're making rope, you know, all that kind of stuff. And so he's kind of using this, this metaphor, this cloth, a cloth in many fibers coming into one thing that is useful, right? It protects people, it clothes them. We are clothed in Christ's righteousness. So, that, so we do these things. Paul did these things so that they may be encouraged. We do these things so that Christians that might be suffering for whatever reason, or, uh, might be, um, having false teaching in their midst, might be encouraged and be able to reject it. Um, and we do it in love, that Paul, uh, God brings us together as one body in Christ, right? Everybody has different roles. Some are hands, some are feet, some are eyes, some are ears, you know, but Christ is the head. "And all the riches, a full assurance of understanding and the knowledge of God's mystery." So again, we get kind of this, this backhanded slap towards whatever this heresy is. Again, more than likely, it's some sort of proto-gnosticism, because knowledge and mystery, and light, and physicality, and spirit, Paul keeps on harping on all those things, which are hallmarks of Gnostic teachings, by the way. And so, it is, "We're knit together in love to reach all the riches, uh, the full assurance of understanding and knowledge," those are headwords, right? Wisdom of God's mystery. And Gnosticism is about revealing the mystery of God, and I wanted to look up a word here. Right? And it, it's agathic. That's the, that's the love that is shown again, this, this self-serving, not self-serving. Um, this, this, uh, servant's love towards one another, right? Um, of, of, of being willing to go to the ends of the earth for somebody else. So, Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the most powerful form, it's the most powerful form of love
We can't do.
in, in the Greek language, right? Whereas we put a bunch of definitions around the word love. Greek has different words at use. So eros, or eros is where we get the word erotic from, right? You can imagine what kind of love that is. You have, uh, philios. We get the word, uh, you know, Philadelphia city of brotherly love from that. So that's, that's a familiar love. And so you have these, I think C.S. Lewis wrote The Four Loves of the Gospel or something else like that, which is a really good, uh, work on kind of, uh, uh, explaining this and how they're used. And he would know that because he's a linguist at heart. Um, I forget the technical term for that, but him and Tolkien both were people who studied languages. That, that was their job. That's what they had their doctorates in, and that's what they taught at, uh, to Oxford or Cambridge, I forget which. Doesn't matter. So, "And whom are hidden all the treasures of wisdom and knowledge." So again, the mystery, which is Christ. Which is, which is inside, which is Jesus. So the mystery isn't in this basically imported cosmos that's been modified from the Greco-Roman world. The mystery is Christ Jesus. And what's the mystery of Christ Jesus? That in the humanity dwelled the divinity fully, the incarnation. That God would die for creation. That creation is not bad, but God dwelt in creation. If, if, imagine, so, so Gnosticism is that the physical world is bad and attracts the spiritual. Right? That, that's, that is the basis of all Gnostic, uh, religions of, of this time. And so, the very fact of Christ being fully God and fully man is a complete anathema to that. Because if the physical is bad, why would God come and dwell in the physical? That makes zero sense, right? Physical, in a lot of ways, in, in Gnosticism is seen as punishment. And so, uh, in the knowledge of God's mystery, which is Christ. So what's the mystery of God? It's Christ Jesus. So when people are coming and they were teaching this false gospel, when they were teaching this false religion, and they were tying it to having secret knowledge, they're having to point away from Christ. And so Paul's argument again is, listen, it's Jesus. It's the Sunday School answer. "And whom are hidden all the treasures of wisdom and knowledge." And so we have a repeating of wisdom and knowledge again, or understanding and knowledge, which is again, very common in Semitic languages, where you say something and then you repeat it in a different way. And that was what Paul has literally just done in the second half of this long run-on sentence. Christ is the mystery. In Him is all the treasures of the wisdom and knowledge, or wisdom and understanding. Excuse me, wisdom and knowledge.
And the problem was that they didn't believe that he was really God?
They had false teachers, they had, they had, yeah, they had false teachers coming in that were leading people away from Christ. Gnosticism very, very early on tries to take over Christianity um, because of the resurrection. And so in Gnosticism, um, they will, this is where you get the idea of a spiritual resurrection and not a physical resurrection. Because in Gnosticism, the spirit is trying to flee the physical. The physical traps the light. And so, this, this language that's used in the gospels is, the Gnostics readily see, um, basically this growing religion that they can piggyback on and take over. And you basically have the equivalent of highly charismatic cult leaders that arise with this. Gnosticism. Yeah, but, well, I, I say that Gnosticism is not a systematized religion. It is very much centered on individual teachers. So Christianity is a systematized religion. We're not centered on individual teachers. Now, we have different doctrines and things that, that we, um, has this been changed behind me? There we go. That's what's supposed to be showing. Um, so, Gnost-, uh, Christianity has many different branches, but all those branches are systematized. Right? And everybody that belongs to those branches teaches the doctrines of that branch. Gnosticism is not systematized. There's lots of different branches. This is why Arineus against the heresies has three books. And they're long books. And a lot of it is repeating. And it's very similar stuff, but it's different teachers that are in charge of these different kind of local cults.
Isn't that the personality of that person teaching? That, that narcissist or, because it's focusing on that person?
Well, it's the cult's personality is what it is. It's just a highly charismatic individual. Is, is what it is, is, the initial draw to Gnosticism is that they are highly charismatic individuals. Which is kind of the basis of the beginning of all cults, is that they have this, this, this charisma that people get attracted to and start to believe, right? Charles Manson, Adolf Hitler, um, uh, David Koresh, right? And now I realize that not every cult is crazy like that, but those guys all had high charisma. And they were able to offer that charisma, offer that public persona, attract followers. "I say this in order that no one may delude you with plausible arguments, for though I am absent in body, yet I am with you in spirit rejoicing to see your good order and the firmness of your faith in Christ." So he is right here, very much just putting it all out on the table. These other people are deluding you. Right? He's called them back to learn and to hold what they, was first preached to them. What Epaphras came in and did, and everything else. And now he is flat out saying that these other teachers that have come in are deluding you. This isn't the spiciest Paul ever gets. I mean, he gets really spicy with the Judaizers and, you know, when he talks about cutting it all off, that they wanna have circumcision again. But this is very much, he's not hiding his argument anymore. And also he says plausible arguments. As, as, if, if you went and you read about Gnosticism, or, or if you listened to the audiobooks or whatever, and you hear it, I mean, it is some really crazy stuff. It is just absolutely crazy stuff. But it starts with a plausible argument. As all religions have to, as all false religions have to, it has to start with a plausible argument. It has to start with some sort of explanation of the world. And for them, it's spiritual and physical. Then you get to all the weird stuff. And numerology is big. Numerology is huge in Gnosticism. But numerology is huge in all the religions at the time. I mean, numerology is huge in Revelation. Three, seven, eight, ten, and twelve. Come up again and again and again and again. Well, numerology comes up again and again and again, and Gnosticism usually four, eight, or twelve. Gets repeated quite a bit. Ten does as well. Cannot remember if three does off the top of my head. Um, and again, it's whichever different cult leader is, is doing it and what he's taking for, for his sole, source material. So, it sounds plausible to these people. They're using what people know culturally. A great example of this is the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. AKA Mormonism. "Oh, we are worshippers of Jesus Christ. It's in our name, so therefore we are Christian." And they use the exact same words that we do. Jesus Christ, justification by faith. Baptism. They will use the words that the Reformed use, ordinances. But they have changed the definition of those words. And you don't know that until you get in deeper. But they're using the language that we use.
They make it sound plausible.
They make it sound plausible. Because if something's implausible,
You're gonna reject it all.
You're gonna reject it, right? This is, this is the science versus religion debate. And, and I, 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 I'm saying religion, all religions, okay? Now, I believe there's only one true religion, there's only one true God, okay? But using cultural definitions, or using, uh, uh, dictionary definitions. Science says that there's an object reality, and that there is no metaphysical reality, because it cannot be proven. I, I shouldn't say science says this, the people that argue this. And so therefore, all religions are implausible, because the metaphysics cannot be proven. Now, what's our response to science? A lot of times, a lot of, a lot of. Science is implausible because it rejects the metaphysical. We're both calling each other implausible, because we both realize if we can win that argument, every other argument disappears. That is the argument to win. So why do Darwinists and creationists argue? Because they're fighting over the plausibility, which is most plausible for the creation of the universe. Because if you can win that argument, everything else doesn't matter. This is why Darwinists do not argue typically over the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Now, are there atheistic arguments over the resurrection of Jesus Christ? There are. There are. But where do they typically argue? Beginning of the universe. Because that's the argument you have to win. This is why, I mean, all apologetics with secularists can be collapsed down to that one argument. That's the only argument that matters. Because if you don't win that argument, nothing else matters. If there is no God who creates the universe, there is no object morality. There is no natural law. We have rules based off of evolution. And those are immutable and they can change. And so they'll sit there and still say, well, you still need, you know, you still need good things, right? We still want good. They're, and, and, and they'll, they'll argue for morality, but the morality will be because it helps the species survive. Right? And so they will look for morality across species. Well, you get some very serious issues there, when you do that. And if you argue with morality base across all species, basically all animal life, or even in families of animal life, so just all mammals or things like that, you get some very interesting things, like male lions, when they take over a pride, what's the first thing they do? They kill all the babies. Why? They're not their children. And when the babies are dead, the lionesses go and heat. Okay? So if we're looking across all the animal kingdom, and we wanna base that off of morality, what's the safer life issues for us? If you're not valuable, we can kill you.
It's a scary thought.
It is a scary thought. It is a scary thought. Because what's not valuable? Children aren't valuable. Children use resources. What's not valuable? People who no longer produce into the economy. You're retired, you're no longer valuable, and you're just sucking up our resources, right? Um, people with disabilities. It is the eugenics movement on steroids. People in prison, we can have forced sterilizations. You look at the, and the thing about it is, is many secularists will sit there and say, well, no, 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 that's too far. That, that's, and it's like, go back- go back and look who argued for those things. It is the secularist of of just a few generations ago. They are taking your logic, you are trying to blunt their logic, and you're trying to use morals to do it, but you don't have morals to stand upon. It all goes back to, what's the first argument, this is why, this is why Ken Ham, that's why it's Answers in Genesis. That's the first argument you have to win in apologetics. And this is, and this is why, so the atheist arguments against creationism, well, who created God? You know, why did he do this, you know, you know, things like this, who's the immovable mover, right? Well, again, the our argument, I mean, what are some of our arguments back? What makes more sense, a chaotic universe where life just coalesces? And we only know of life on one single small insignificant speck in the universe, in a very small minor galaxy? Or that there is a grand creator to the universe and your life has purpose? There is chaos in the universe, but there's also order in the universe. Look at um, the the, you know, you ever, did you guys have to do model uh molecules in science class? Right, and you have the the nucleus, and then the first ring can only have two electrons, and then every other ring after that can only have a max of eight electrons? And you're supposed to have a balance of electrons to protons, negative charges to positive charges, and if you don't have a balance of electrons to protons, what do you have? You have an ion, and what happens with ions, they like to interact with things. Right? And you have these very powerful magnetic forces between the um, protons and and neutrons, where if you split them, if you split the atom, what happens? You create a mini sun on the planet somewhere, and it's somebody's very, very bad day. Right, um, there's there's a lot of, and, right, what is, I mean, scientifically, what is matter? It is slowed down energy. That is E equals mc squared, energy equals mass times the speed of light squared. Your body is slowed down energy, this coffee is slowed down energy. That's what gives things physical form. Um, light is both a particle and a form of energy, right? So you have things that are like, this defies the rules as we understand it of science. Um, so so there's chaos, but there's also order when you get down on things, so there there is order in the chaos. And there's there's things that just, nope, uh, evolution does not explain, it can't explain consciousness, it can't explain the concept of a soul. Now, they'll sit there and say, there is no soul, but it can't explain consciousness, how does consciousness arise? Why do cells divide, right? The, in in an evolutionistic theory. Life begins, and then somehow, there's a need to recreate at some point, and the cell divides, that's the first thing. But why? What is the scientific reason behind that? There is none. Science can answer a lot of whys, but it can't answer that one. And then it comes to, okay, so you have cells that are dividing, but then how do you get sexual s- sexual life? In other words, male and female, because everything is, every, science agrees, the first life was asexual, so how do you get sexual life? And there's various theories for that, but the other thing is, is like, how does that create an evolutionary advantage? And if it creates an evolutionary advantage, why do we still have single cell organisms that only s- uh reproduce asexually? That is by splitting. Right, shouldn't one wipe out the other? And you just you just go on down the list and.
It sounds like they're trying to use just the human brain to uh justify and and explain everything.
They're they're trying to.
And we as Christians, as spiritual.
Yeah, they're they're trying, yeah, they're they're trying to explain the universe without God.
Yes.
That that's, that's what happens in the eight, in in the eighteen to nineteen hundreds in science.
Yeah.
Is is you have this movement to leave God behind. And this this pure uh reason, rationality, I think is the technical term, right? Or or materiality, whatever you wanna, this, I mean, this is, Marx bases his political theory off of that thought. Right? Which is why Marx that if you create basically utopia, ri- religion will die out, because religion is just there to help people cope with suffering. So if you end suffering, religion will die out. It's Lenin who's like, no, we're gonna end religion tomorrow, actually, you know, yesterday. Um, but again, I I bring this all up, because my whole point is, right? When we make these arguments, especially when I make these arguments, it looks like the the uh evolution and the scientific answer to the beginning of the universe is not a plausible argument, because there's all these holes in it, so. So every argument has to be plausible, for people to believe it. And so these people aren't coming in with all the crazy stuff, right? Nobody tells you about um, all the crazy stuff in Mormonism, or all the crazy stuff in Scientology, or all the crazy stuff in Islam, before you convert. That stuff comes later. Cause otherwise it's very implausible. Um, for though I am absent in body, and then notices, he's almost like using their own language, their own terms against them. Though I am absent in body, yet I am with you in spirit. Rejoicing to see your good order and the firmness of your faith in Christ. So ignore these teachers that bring in plausible arguments, but are pointing you away from Christ. And even though I'm not there physically, I am there spiritually. Um, and we are rejoicing in the good order and the firmness of our faith in Christ, because what brings the church together? What brings the church together is not being physically present with one another. In the sense that every Christian in the world has to attend the same church on Sunday. Right? What connects me to a Christian in Nebraska is the same thing that connects me to a Christian in Ghana, the same thing that connects me to a Christian in China, a Christian in England, a Christian in Mexico, a Christian in Bolivia. Christ, the Holy Spirit, the triune God, that's what connects us together. And so, this is reflected in our liturgy, in our communion liturgy. Um, because when we're in the middle of our communion liturgy, what are we singing? Holy, 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 right, the Sanctus, Sanctus is Latin for holy, we get really imaginative with the names, okay? So we get holy, holy and saint are from the same root word, by the way, in 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 languages, they just come from different languages. But they mean the same thing, which is why we have All Saints' Day and All Hallows' Eve, because it's All Holy Day tomorrow, AKA All Saints' Day. Um, so, where was I? Oh, we sing holy, 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 because when we have communion, we are in the physical presence of God. Or the real presence of God, in more than just a spiritual way, so heaven is on earth, and what is Isaiah here in chapter six of Isaiah? This uh, cherubam serafam, I get them mixed up, calling to one another, holy, 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 right? And what do we say in the prayer, right? You guys remember? We have a prayer that we say in communion, I'm gonna get the words exactly right, so I don't misquote anything. This wasn't on my notes to to talk about, so that's what I'm having to look up. Therefore, angels and archangels, and with all the company of heaven, we laud and magnify your glorious name, evermore praising you, and singing, or saying, technically says saying, saying, but since we're about to sing, I always say singing, right? Um, all the company of heaven doesn't just mean the church triumphant, it means the church militant. Because where is heaven, heaven is on earth, and heaven is on earth in a million different altars around the world. So it's every Christian who has ever come before you, every Christian presently, and every Christian who will come after you, because heaven is in eternity, which is outside time. In theory, you wanna hurt your brain, alright, you wanna hurt your brain. John is in heaven, in Revelation, this is gonna be, this is gonna be um, the the first reading for this Sunday, All Saints' Day, observed. John is in Revelation, and he's heard, you know, the the twelve thousand, the twelve thousand, twelve thousand, and a hundred forty-four thousand, but then he turns around, and it's more than a hundred forty-four thousand, because one of the themes of Revelation is what is said, and then what happens? What happens is always greater than what's just promised, right? The promise, the the fulfillment of the promise is always greater than the promise. John turns around, there's an untold host, it's everybody in heaven, John sees himself there. When you take communion here on earth, you are taking communion with your triumphal self in heaven. You are in two places at once. It breaks the uh, uh, Back to the Future brain trying to think about that, right? So it's not just your loved ones, but it's you there, with your loved ones, your loved ones here, with with you, and you with you. Um, if we ponder that too much, we will, I lost my coffee.
Well, see pastor, there's, there's religions that you brought up a hundred forty-four thousand.
Jehovah's Witness, yeah, they're really big on that.
It's okay, it's Jehovah, so they only faith.
Yeah, but they're Aryan, so they're wrong to begin with.
Yeah, it comes down to uh, people that don't believe are always with human brain trying to figure it out. And that's impossible, you you can't be in heaven, you can't, yeah, I got it.
Right, and so, again, so Paul in this, he points them back to their firmness of their faith in Christ. Right, um, what's Hebrew say? How do we see? What does Hebrew say, how do we, how do we see, how do we see Christ? By faith, not by sight, right?
He's that physically right in front of us, but we have to believe it.
Well, and and that's the problem, the, cause the the human world wants to always be able to explain it.
We we wanna understand it, right?
And you can't understand.
We wanna understand it, and you can't, you can't understand the understandable. To give you just a random analogy, be like asking an aunt to explain democratic form of government.
He might have a bigger brain than we do, too.
Aunt doesn't know, right? Um, aunt doesn't know the United States exists, right, aunt's just living here. Um, so, we don't have to have an answer for everything. Because the answer is the Sunday School answer, Jesus Christ. And I understand that people aren't satisfied with that answer. To me, it goes back to be still and know that I am God. There's there's a lot of meaning in that verse. A lot of times that verse is used for when people are going through trauma, right? Because trauma, what's the question, why?
Okay, why can't I understand?
Right, and so be still and know that I'm God, but that verse isn't just about people going through trauma. It's about all the mysteries of God. And we're not God. Okay. So any questions on these first five verses yet?
There's a lot there.
There is, there's always a lot there, the thing about it is, is scripture is never in isolation to other scripture. I mean, that's that's, you know, when we say scripture and scripture interprets scripture, that's not a cliche, but that's, you know, how do we understand God's word? So in, this is important, I mean, this is one of the battles of the Reformation, sola scriptura, right? So sola scriptura says scripture alone, not that we chuck out all the tradition, but then when it comes to the interpretation, the understanding of scripture, we look to other scriptures, we don't have a magisterium that tells us what it means. We don't have reason which tells us what it means, we look to scripture, and if scripture doesn't give us an answer, we don't answer the question. So, some people are elected to heaven, what does that mean? God chooses some people for heaven, what does Calvin come in and do? Well, Calvin comes in and says, well, logically therefore, God chooses people to not go to heaven. Read scripture, it's not there, right, now I realize that they are gonna go to their verses, and their verse is gonna be, uh, Jacob I have loved and Esau that I hated, but that is not an eschatological, or that is not a salvific verse. It's explaining why Jacob gets the promise. And what's the promise? The promise to Jacob was the promise of Abraham, that the Savior would come through his line. God blesses Esau, if God hated Esau, Esau would have lived in torments and died, but Esau becomes a mighty man of his own right. So does God hate Esau in that sense? No. Um, so we don't do that, or we don't sit there and say, okay, so how do we explain communion? Right? And in Roman Catholicism, we sit there and say, well, the magisterium said this, so this is the explanation for communion. Now we go and we look at God's word, well, how can it be Christ's body and blood, um, and bread and wine at the same time? I don't know, it's just Christ's word, so we don't look toward Aristotelian answer of that, and we don't go to a a a Calvinist that it's only spiritual, and we don't go to a Zwinglian where it's just symbolic, but we just let scripture speak for itself, and we sit there and say, this is a mystery, that's why it's called a sacrament.
I think a a a lot of Christians, they, on the communion, they see it in remembrance of me, so they just think it's Christ saying, when you take it, you remember that it's me.
Yeah, so it almost seems like they just wanna emphasize one part of it. And the thing about it is, is yeah, we take communion in remembrance to Christ, we take communion in remembrance that he is the Passover lamb, the sacrificial lamb, that he died on the cross, that communion brings us to Good Friday. Absolutely, it is a memorial meal, but it's more than just a memorial meal, and that's our whole argument, it's more than just a memorial meal. And they stop at saying, it's only a memorial meal, and we say, you have all these other verses. If it is only a memorial meal, if it is only symbolic, how can you be guilty against sinning against the body and blood of Jesus Christ? Because they interpret the body and blood of Jesus Christ, or excuse me, the the body of Jesus Christ, they interpret that as the congregation. Okay, how am I sinning against them by taking this? How am I sinning against, right? And they go, well, in division. Well, what is division, right? Can a northern Baptist take communion to this southern Baptist congregation, absolutely. I have open communion, so you're taking it in division. I've I've uh, I've been to Baptist Christmas Eve services before I was a pastor, when I had Christmas Eve off, so to speak. They pass the tray around, right? They're not asking you what you believe, they're not asking you if you're baptized, which by the way, the Didakay makes very, very clear, that communion is for baptized Christians. They're not doing any of that stuff. So so how how do you, like, and I love them, and I'm sure they have arguments for this, and I'm sure that that one of them is watching us live or watches us live later, or screaming is gonna make a comment about this to correct our misunderstanding. And I invite that, please, because I don't deal with their theology all the time. Um, but it's like, you have to take scripture to interpret scripture. Um, this gets played out, speaking of sola scriptura, this gets played out with the antilagomina texts. So the antilagomina texts were texts that weren't used in the worship life of the church, because of one reason or another. We didn't know their author, for example, with Hebrews. Revelation, really hard to understand, um, there were whole areas, whole dioceses that did not use it in their canon. Canon means what was used basically in the service, right? Uh, so so there's that, and and so, um, right? Um, in the Lutherans and the and the private writing sit there and say, if you're going to make a doctrine, it can't just stand on antilagumina. You have to find it referenced in the homologumina, which is the Bible books that everybody attested to, that this is, there's there's no question about this, so it's the Old Testament. It's the four gospels, it's most of Paul's letters, or all of Paul's letters, right? Um, and things like that, you have to find this, and so that is sola scriptura, not that we chuck tradition out of the way, it's when scripture doesn't speak to something, that we look to tradition. So why do we use the liturgy? Because there is not a commanded. Because there is not a commanded form of worship in the Bible. We are to worship in spirit and truth, right? But there's not, you open with the introit, and then you have, you sing a cherye, and then a hymn of praise, and then some readings, you know, things like that. Why, why follow the liturgy? Historically, that is how Christians have worshipped throughout the millennia, and there have been variations to that liturgy. And the liturgy that we have, the Christian liturgy that we have, is based off of the liturgy of the synagogues. Mattens is probably the oldest form of liturgy that we have. And it is based upon the liturgy of the synagogues. Now some people sit there and say, well, why, why is it not the divine service or the Mass? Well, because if you go and you read First Corinthians, you will see that when is communion celebrated? It's not celebrated in the midst of a church service, it's celebrated in the midst of a community meal. And it's not until later on in two, three hundreds, at the beginning, where communion becomes part of an actual ritualistic church service. Instead of just a community meal. So all of that to say, scripture doesn't speak to that, so how should we worship? Oh, okay, is that the only way we can worship? No, because scripture doesn't speak to it, right? But if we wanna sit there and say, hey, we're dealing with this question, what should we do? Has the church spoken on it in its past? Is there a tradition for this, and what's the reasons for this tradition? Are, are these traditions in line with scripture, or conflicted against scripture? If they conflict against scripture, we get rid of them. So we reform the Mass in the fifteen hundreds, we take out the Merry Worship, we take out the prayers to the saints, the invocation of the saints. Can you pray to saints? You should not pray to saints. Do saints pray on our behalf? They absolutely do. But who are we supposed to pray to? God alone. God alone, that's what scripture speaks of, we pray to God alone, that's the ultimate, that is one of the ultimate ways to fulfill the first commandment. When you pray, you are saying, I'm not God, somebody else is, or something else has.
They're just gonna say, we're all saints, so we, don't be praying to me.
So we don't invoke the saints that way. But we still point to the saints for their faithful witness and testimony throughout the centuries, and we say, God, make me like one of them, faithful until the end. Whether that be dying peacefully in my bed, or under horrific torture, make me like them, faithful, uh, faithful to the end. So, um, I don't know how we got here.
It was good to schedule that.
This is a good place to stop, if you want. I, I think that's a good place to stop. I mean, I'll, I'll address this right here, verse six. Uh, therefore, as you received Christ Jesus the Lord, so walk in him, rooted and built up in him, and established in the faith, just as you were taught abounding in thanksgiving. So Christ Jesus the Lord, that, that, there, there's so much there just in that phrase, Christ Jesus the Lord. Christ is Messiah or Anointed One, so the Anointed One, who is Jesus the Lord, which again, and I, I hammer this so many times, but I can say it again, that is meaning that he is God. That he's not a created, or the greatest of created. This is how you said God, if you were a Greek Jew that didn't know Hebrew. If you were a Hebraic Jew, you would say Adonai, which is the Lord. Um, so, this gets reflected in the Apostles' Creed. And Jesus Christ our Lord, right? We are confessing that Jesus is God. And the reason for this all is stems back to the Babylonian captivity, and coming out of that, and putting up the six hundred and thirteen laws around the Ten Commandments, of which you will not even utter the name of God, even in reverent worship, because you might misuse it, even in reverent worship. And so we will use a completely different word instead, and we're still calling him Lord. And this gets reflected in Christian practice to our Bibles today, where if you go back and you open up the Old Testament and you see Lord in all caps, guess what word is there? It is not Lord, it is Yahweh, the name given at the burning bush. But it's just an inherited practice, it's, it's a pious practice, it's a pious practice. At this point, trying to change the practice would be like tilting against the wind, not even just a windmill. You're just, you're, you're trying to stop the wind all in general, okay? You're not even as crazy as Don Coyote, you're, you're, you're two steps beyond Don Coyote at this point. So, Christ Jesus the Lord, and so like, if you wanna follow this little false religion, Christ, Jesus, God. The Messiah, the Anointed One of God, who is Jesus, which you know, who is God himself. These people aren't claiming that. These people are not claiming that. So walk in him, what does it mean to walk in him? To walk in his precepts, to walk in his teachings, which is the Torah, it's, it's the law, it's, it's the Ten Commandments. It's the positive aspects of the law, keep God first, right? Keep God first, that's the negative aspect. How do I keep God first? Crawl upon him in any, you know, troubles? Love him with all my heart, with all my strength, with all my mind. Those are the positive aspects of the commandments, so keep the positive aspects of the commandments. Rooted and built up in him, why rooted and built up in him? Why use that language? Goes back to the Psalms. Blessed is the man who does not sit in the seat of sacrifice, right? And that language gets repeated in Psalms, being rooted in the Lord. So he's making allusions to the Old Testament here, established in the faith, not a faith, but the faith. What is the faith? The faith that Christ Jesus is the Lord, who was, who died and was resurrected for me, just as you were taught. You're right. One sentence, one sentence, go back to what you were taught. What do we teach our little children? Believe in Jesus Christ, cause he died for you.
Plain and simple.
Plain and simple. Jesus loves me, this I know, for the Bible tells me so, right? Abounding in thanksgiving.
And my little kids, like, when I ask, they tell me, I'm not sure.
And the difference is, we accept that through faith. And the, and the people that are skeptics are trying to prove it through knowledge.
Yes. So basically, Paul is pointing them back to their justification and living in sanctification. That is, that you are being made holy. Uh, and you're being made holy in the name of Jesus Christ, who is God. Now, we're gonna end there.
Pastor, that Bible study I gave you, that, blew it to that Lutheran church, so it was Maloch, right? Yahweh, what was the word before that, that I've never heard? It's.
I'd have to look, uh, can you just accept?
It starts with an M. Cause I don't think, I don't. It's Maloch or what? I've never heard it before.
Do you understand all the stuff he talks about?
Sure, I do. Can you see it?
All those names? All those names that he put in there?
Maloch, Yahweh, which means messenger of God, or messenger of Yahweh.
Now, is Maloch, it's not in the Old Testament, is it? I, I mean, the word, oh, it's in the Hebrew.
It's Hebrew, Maloch, it's Hebrew, for messenger.
I've never heard it before, in my whole life, Maloch.
Well, okay, so, so, there's, there's two common misperceptions that I find in the Old Testament when it deals with the pre incarnate Christ. The first is that at the burning bush, it is God himself, right? Says messenger of the Lord, who should I say, sit? Tell them God, right? Um, so it's the messenger of Yahweh, it is Yahweh. God often works as his own messenger, not exclusively, but often works as his own messenger to people. Which is to say something, considering that, even in the, um, Old Testament understanding, nine times out of ten, or actually ninety-nine billion after, out of one trillion times that you deal with God, you go through an intermediary, you never deal with God directly himself. And all the surrounding li, uh, religions, you have to make sacrifices and deal with intermediaries. But we see, this is why this is recorded in scripture so much, is that God takes direct intervention and talks to people. And calls them out, um, call, calls them to be his people, all that, and saves them. Um, God is not a God who sits up there and then sends somebody to do his dirty work, he does the dirty work. Um, the best phrase that I have for this, or the phrase that I love most of this, is that we have a God who has dirt under his fingernails. And, and that's scandalous for a lot of people, because we have, we have separated the physical from the spiritual. We did what the Gnostics tried to do for so long, we've done it ourselves. But God incarnate, uh, I mean, it's, it's the promise, the, the gospels, God incarnate, is the promise that we see the pattern over and over again in the Old Testament, where God comes and gets his fingers dirty, he does it himself directly. And the second one also happens in Exodus, and that is, there is no angel of death. It is God himself who meets up the tenth plague. If you go back and you read the tenth plague, it's God himself who does it. Um, and I don't know if that's because people don't wanna think of God doing his alien work, which is to kill sinners. And we say it's the alien work because it's not the work he wants to do. Um, but it is God himself. There, there is no such thing as an angel of death. And the whole reason I bring that up is because when you deal with pagan cosmologists, when you deal with Wiccanism, which has incorporated things from Christianity nowadays, when you deal with voodoo and hoodoo, which incorporates things from Christianity, when you deal with these things, they will talk about the angel of death. And it's like, great, you never read the Bible. And the person that taught that language didn't understand the Bible. Cause the angel of death, the messenger of death, is God. Why? Because the angel of life, the messenger of life, is God. And you don't have two guys up there with the same job, cause you either live or die. It's, it's my frustration with Peter's icon having two keys, right? And I understand why, one key locks and one key unlocks. But I've never met a lock before that has two separate keys, depending on whether you're locking it or unlocking it. It's the same key! The angel of death is the angel of life, the angel of life is God. And it, I mean, it explicitly says it, and, and, I mean, it's God who meets up the tenth plague, so anyway. I think that's enough.
We got you fired up today.